So, it's very fast.
I call this committee to hold meeting to order. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Recommendation is the committee to hold adopts July 23, 2018, agenda as presented. May I have a moment, please? Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Go carry. We have our director, Mary Adie, present. Good morning, Paulie. Welcome.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Next item is the recommendation that committee to hold adopts the June 11, 2018 committee to hold minutes as presented. Move it, please. Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. Okay, moving on to our registered petitions and delegations. Our first one is the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. Subject matter is the 2018 quarterly report. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
There's...
One second.
Two. There you go.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, your mic. Oh. There you go.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen. So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, council, and everyone else. This morning, I'm doing the presentation. Kendra was called away on a family emergency, so she is unannable. So, I just, before we get started, I just want to mention the fact that the community party on Friday night was a huge success. It was a great fundraiser. I am thrilled to see what occurred and how everybody seemed to enjoy themselves, and the collaboration between the groups was amazing. So, I'm very happy with what's gone on. And it just goes further to show that the Chamber and DVA are working together as a team to get things together. So, further to that, I have, you all have a paper copy, I'm sure, of our report, but I'll just read what I have.
No, we don't.
Well, then I wasn't the only one to get it the first time, but I'll make sure it's forwarded to you so you do have it, because it does, I know what the issue was. And I have paper, but I spent my first hour this morning, you don't have to tell us because of stuff.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, we received the copy over the weekend and the evening, so I'll forward it to you. I managed to get it on screen, but didn't have time to send it forward.
Thanks, man.
Yeah.
So, there are Congress and council. The Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce, like many of their members, have been heavily impacted by the flooding on May 10. In the beginning of May, we started leasehold improvements on our new office, 125 Market Avenue. Early during this renovation, we received notice from the village of Midway that our Midway office was being taken back to be used as a hostel. As accommodations are much needed in the Boundary Country, we moved all our assets over at record time to facilitate a renovations group, which was very interesting. Merely days after our leasehold improvements were completed, our office flooded out. While we managed to secure the majority of our records, computers, and office supplies, we were not able to save the desks, chairs, room tables, and bookshelves. And I'd like to take this opportunity today to thank Councilor Chris Tomet for being there, calling in sandbags, assisting us to rebuild our office, and following up after to haul down his furniture to the dump. While we have accrued some additional expenses as a result of the flood, we have managed to attain a balanced budget. At this time, we have 196 members, of which 45 are new. We have received nearly 11,000 in membership fees and expect the remaining members who have not yet paid the fees will do so. Many of the members have seasonal businesses and renew once day-to-day operations resume. Typically, we reimburse these members in May. However, this year, we're unable to do so until the beginning of July, and that's because we've had no office facilities. We're sort of working out of the car. I know what it's like to be homeless. We are still on track to achieve our projected 14,000 in membership fees. As we recognize the financial impact the flood had on our members, we are working with our members to ensure membership fees do not place an unnecessary burden on them. We'll update the council as soon as possible on the results of these initiatives. We are on the Business Recovery Committee with Community Futures, Boundary as our team lead. While this flood again was devastating, it has provided some opportunities for our organizations to connect and really establish healthy working relationships once again. We are partnering with organizations and recovering projects according to the new opportunities we'll bring. We have moved movies in the park for 2018 from City Park to Gallery 2. These have been well attended despite the venue change. A quick head count for ensuring of Yamanji, welcome to Jungle, resulted in a turnout of 60 people. Gallery 2 gearing space is a much smaller venue than City Park and felt very full. We have 11 sponsors equating it to 1,426.19, which in excess of our anticipated sponsorship of $3,000. This year, we included a vendor market and to further support the entire business community, we await all associated vendor fees. The vendor market at Movies in the Park is in line with our community engagement initiative. On July 14 and 15, we attended, supported, and hosted movies at Greenwood Founder's Day and Grandport's softball tournament. This year, we set up a kid zone at the curling rink as a place for the kids to escape, to heat while their parents play basketball. Thank you to the curling club for the perfect venue in close proximity to the baseball diamonds. We showed movies, played games, and crafts, and enjoyed the pool space. We will continue to support and attend all events: DVA, Listen Nicole, Party in Streets, Tops and Tapless Gallery 2 wine tasting, Community Futures Business Excellence Awards, and 2019 Shopping Street. In addition, we will continue to support their events as requested and continue to work with the downtown business associations with their events. As per the comparative report provided, we are on track with their budget for 2018. I would like to highlight the line item on office administration. It includes wages, rent, utilities, phone, internet, subcontract, website recording secretary center, accounting and legal fees, bank charges, professional development, office supplies, and membership dues. On behalf of the BCRCC and our members, thank you Mayor Conrad for your continued support and approval of our 2018 fever service. And now submitted by Kendra and presented by me. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Do you want me to go through this budget, or can you just...
I think when we get the part of the budget, we'll do it.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. 4B. Subject matter is B.C. Emergency Health Services for Community Paramedics in B.C. And we have Mr. Wayne Ayish.
Ayish.
Ayish. My apologies. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, everybody. And, uh...
Mayor, council, and everybody else for letting me present this presentation.
Thank you. Do you want to just turn your back?
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks. Two years ago, B.C. Ambulance Service initiated a community service, community paramedic program, and... The objective was to help stabilize the paramedic staffing in rural, small, urban, yes, and urban, or rural, small rural and remote communities. It also was identifying gaps within the health system, and we, the idea is to bridge the gaps, help the local healthcare teams. Uh... This one? Thank you. Uh... Our objective is to help the older population, mainly 65 and older, living with chronic diseases and who have heart failure, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, diabetes, high blood pressure, also help assisting risks of falls, and eventually the support for palliative approach care. Services is referred to by a doctor or other healthcare provider, and the services, no cost to the patient. Up to now, we have about 99 communities within the province. In the interior, we have about 40, 43 of our part-time positions or part-time equivalent positions, and nine are, uh, full-time positions. Now, I currently have the full-time position for Grandport's. Greenwood, Midway have part-time positions, and close as possible, they've been in operation for a year now. Castor has a full-time position, Fruitvale has one part-time position, and Rosson has a part-time position. Some of the communities that are involved right at the moment, basically at the end of their initiative to fulfill any full-time equivalent positions within the province. So, just to introduce myself, sorry, Wayne Ayish. I've been a part-time paramedic in the service here in Grandport's for 27 years. Currently, full-time position for community paramedic. I'm working now Tuesday through Friday, $800 to $1,800, and I'm supported by my regional training officer, Ken Mier, who is from Princeton. Jan Fulkowski, our unit chief here. Ayish, another paramedic here this year in town, and less cleverly, he's our manager for the district. We promote health promotion and awareness within the community by attending clinics with community, other community providers such as Community Health, holding CPR or other health promotions, et cetera. Go next, please. Also support taking vitals and home health monitoring also. With patient referrals, sir, that comes one. Thank you. Our visits are with referrals from a doctor or nurse, nurse practitioner, or other healthcare provider, basically helping the patients at the home so they can manage, self-manage their condition and feel more comfortable with it. Help monitor their medications with their compliance and helping any issues that they may have with them. Also, help with the fall risks, identifying and collaboration with other healthcare providers to help alleviate unnecessary burden. We come on regular scheduled visits, agents to help them stay connected with their families. There's a doctor condition. Uh... Let's get that. You... Also help patients to refer to the regular, the source if they are in need of additional resources. We listen to the patient, the client's concerns, and we get the assistance that they need. And this, sorry, and sideways, and sideways. Anyway, this, anyways, this is scope of practice. I work, I'm a PCPIV endorsed paramedic, and as here you can see, I am endorsed to provide care if needed for the client and on urgency basis if required. This is some of the protocols that I am able to perform. So, again, the service was in collaboration with Ministry of Health, health authorities, emergency, B.C. Emergency Health Service, paramedics, paramedics, and first nations, and other stakeholders. Pretty much it. If any questions, I'm glad to have a trip.
So, you just need to hit that move button again. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. This is definitely of interest to me, community paramedics, because with the ambulance services and the paramedics, you know, used for that, being at a fair premium, especially in our area, I'm very interested in what your contribution is to the community. So, I do have a few questions. First one with the, there's, on your chart there, there's qualification levels, and I'm just wondering about that and how that differs or lines up with the state community nurses that would go in to visit the elderly, people needing that kind of service? And, yeah, so qualification levels and the, how that supplements the community nursing program?
So, currently, currently qualifications are, as I explained, there's IPCP, IP endorsement, so I'm able to help with any conditions or emergencies that can arise versus if the community nurse home support come in, they're only allowed to do a certain amount of protocol that they are required, so I can bridge that gap if they can't provide that.
And I guess another question would be comparing your service now to the paramedic, paramedical services that we would have for ambulance exchange, that kind of thing, taking people to and from the hospital?
You're still on?
Yeah, you're still on. Sorry, I didn't put my mic on for that question.
So, to answer your question, because my, my role is preventative, is more preventative versus the ambulance service is more of an emergency service name, so I don't transport. So, my thing is I work at the client at home, and if there is an emergency situation or a P2P transport, they have a call for the regular crew to come and transport.
And is the regular, has the regular crew been affected in any way by implementation of your program in the communities?
So, currently, I'm in my last of my orientation phase, so as far as I know, it hasn't really impacted much with that, other than trying to get new staffing, which we haven't got that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the council.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering how many clients you reach per week where your, I guess your office is located at the hospital? And what qualifies a person to have your services rather than the community nurses?
So, currently, I'm located at an ambulance base, which is at the situation at the hospital currently, and, uh... Nurses are, they identify a certain client that would benefit where they can, let's say, the client needs a daily visit and their resources are, are taken up by other clients, at that time, they may be referring to go see this and monitor their vitals or condition or specific thing that they're asking. It can be a daily thing, a weekly thing, a monthly thing, in all the kinds where they feel good and fit, but require my service where they can't quite keep, but they're supposed to have one.
So, how many people do you see per week and how long do you visit usually each?
That will be dependent on business travel and how many, again, right now, I don't have the initial clients to start again. Hopefully, maybe at the end of the month, they'll start, if I'm getting signed off by my training officer.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Wayne, that's an excellent presentation, and I'm really excited that the service that you're going to provide is complementary to the home support and the community nurses that go in, and I think it's just wonderful for seniors that are able to stay in their own home with the kinds of services that are being provided, including the arts. So, I think it's just, just wonderful, and I'm very excited about that.
Thank you very much.
I just want to add, just have a question. Do I have to, Wayne, or?
Are you adding?
I was just going to quickly make an addition to the top at the end of Wayne here, so if you would like to ask Wayne a question about this.
Yeah, I agree, this is an excellent service as a supplement to what we already have, and I'm just curious, this is part of the pilot project that was initiated about a year and a half ago with interior health on making healthcare a more team approach, so that they would bring the more practitioner nurses, nurse practitioners, and other, so that a patient doesn't always have to see a doctor, so they'd be able to see somebody like you, they'd be able to see a nurse practitioner, they'd be able to see a whole person, but there would be a team looking after the patient. This pilot project we were introduced to about a year and a half ago, which was quite exciting at the time. Dr. Murray was part of the committee that was leading that, and so is this part of that? And in your, and the second other question is, is this an introduction to your services or is there an ask in this presentation? Is there an ask somewhere?
Initially, this would be part of the pilot project that the Ministry of Health and health providers. How that is been meshed to get to this point, that's beyond what I'm able to answer. All right. However, it is, it's in progress right now. It's still in its stages, but it's ongoing for the past two years actually, and it's, they're learning from what has been from the last two years, and so far, it's sounding very successful. So, we're basically up and running.
Good, it's exciting, because we haven't had an update, so...
Yeah, so I'm, again, in my tier, the hope is I am able to be signed off if I met all my criteria, which is part of my presentation today to, to, to get that one more checked.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, and my, hopefully, I get signed off, then I can be up for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, all. My name is Jan Fulkowski. Just wanted to introduce myself to the community. I've been here since the beginning of April. I was actually born in Greenland because my mom didn't make it to the hospital. So, this is sort of my hometown in a way. I used to log around here, and it all started with the first aid ticket up in the bush and so forth, and it progressed to where I'm at now. I've 33 years in the ambulance service, spent time throughout the province full-time. I just want to say with this community paramedic program that's initiated here, it's already been in phase in smaller communities, more remote like Greenwood and such, for the last two years, and there's been some successes and there's been some shortfalls, but it's really started to take up steam now. So, a lot of the hiccups that have happened already are being addressed and are being resolved, and so people such as Wayne, who just started a few months ago in his training, the success is much higher. So, Wayne being, sorry, Wayne being a local guy that is familiar with a lot of people, he's, he's with the hospital, the teams, and when you were mentioning teams just a couple minutes ago. I've sat with Wayne in the hospital boardroom with the acute care managers, various nurses, the community health teams and such, the heart review, and at least probably three times a week, Wayne's in there talking with the discharge planning and so forth, because when people are being discharged from the hospital, sometimes they, they're not sick enough to be in the hospital, but they're not well enough to be at home either, because, and then there's the risk of falling and the risk of their diabetes maybe going off track or their chronic obstructive pulmonary, the COPD, the emphysema, those things going offline. So, nurses right now, especially the RNs that do the home care support, are at a premium. It's hard to find nurses, and it's even hard to find paramedics, let me tell you, because I'm struggling with staffing shortages here, albeit I have a full team now. So, nurses are hard to come by, and they're very valuable with their high-end skills. So, we kind of bridge the gap between, there are the home care support workers who go in and help with the general everyday duties or tasks of people, so we're kind of between them, we're between the nurses. So, we're at no cost to the patient, but it's, as they look at it, it's probably a lot more feasible to have us go in and just quickly spend an hour, somebody, once a week, let's say you're, sometimes a few times a week to begin with, till they get on their feet a bit more at home, it's cheaper for us to come in there, have Wayne come in and just monitor. And there's things that we, as paramedics, become very good at. When we go into somebody's homes, we, when somebody calls us because they've fallen, well, it's just a simple fall out of bed, but what's predicated in that? It's the fact they may have a bladder infection, the fact they may be having high blood pressure that's out of whack, if their sugars are out of whack. So, we usually find causes behind it all. We report that up to the hospital, we bring them into the, into the emergency. So, this is where Wayne's skills are going to be really good, is that he already has that detective mode going for him. So, ambulance services over the years, it's sort of my philosophy, is that we are good at getting in between the cracks of everything. We are the glue of the system, because when doctors go on strike and deny them when they close hospital or the patients, their clinic doors, and the ambulance service is transported to the next community or so forth, we kind of go in everywhere and we kind of provide the gaps, we kind of fill the gaps. So, I've already seen Wayne in the, in the meetings with the nurses and such, and he's being really well-received here. God, thank God you came along. We need the help here. So, there's a lot of burden on our team here. Wayne is very much part of that team, like I say, three, at least three meetings a week. So, I'm very positive about this. I think it's well, it's a long time coming probably, because it's throughout a lot of Europe, America, a lot of more progressive countries use this already. So, we do fill the gaps, and that's about it. Anybody have any questions to anything I've added, or?
Yes, thank you.
Are you, what's your number at right now? So, you probably have, what, two cars?
I have...
You have two, two cars that are on the road, and so are you able to acquire more staffing? Is your staffing level going to be increased even further?
So, I have two cars on the road, and I also have a spare car. It's sort of what we call regional spare, so if there is sometimes an overload and that car is available, it's not being used because one of our vehicles is in the shop for mechanical, or we also work with that regional car supply Greenwood and Midway with the spare when their vehicles need to go in for servicing, so if that car is available, I can actually have three crews on if I have enough staff. As it stands right now, I have enough to cover those two cars. I have 17 employees, including myself. I'm a full-time member, Wayne is a full-time member, so even beyond Wayne's four days of work, he does cover on his days off, and I do the same on my days off to keep the cars staffed and such. It is a struggle. It is a struggle. This is small-town British Columbia compared to the larger centers such as Kelowna or Victoria, Vancouver, the Fraser Valley. Love small-town is a struggle, and we will sometimes do what we have to do, as much as I, I just finished putting in a 24-hour back-to-back shift, which I'm not supposed to go if I get too many hours, but it's what it takes to keep this community rolling. So, it's difficult to find staff who are willing to come to a smaller community because they have their eyes on the prize, which is Vancouver, their full-time career. There's not full-time jobs here to be had yet, albeit the ambulance service is in the process now of looking in a reverse, instead of taking all the talent from here and putting it down there, they're now looking in the next few years of putting that talent here, like making the full-time jobs here, so people can come to more stable jobs here, instead of them having to go to Vancouver and then they can't afford to live because of the extreme Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you for that.
Okay, we'll move on to our next. Our next petition is from the Whispers of Wolf. Subject matter: Utilization of Dick Bartlett Facilities. Melissa Shogun from Whispers of Wolf. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, councillors and everyone in attendance. So, I'm here today with a multi-day event request. I'm here today with a multi-day event request. It's a little bit unusual, I suppose. Since March of 28th, March 28th of this year, our community kitchen has been closed, as you may well know. And in that time, while we have found a commercial kitchen trailer that we've purchased, unfortunately, we have not found any land on which to operate this trailer. In the meantime, I'm hoping that perhaps we could utilize one of our local park facilities, in particular Dick Bartlett, to resume our services during the week, Monday to Friday, approximately 11 till 1, around noon hour, where we would provide a free lunch picnic as well, and probably more importantly, our drop-in services to the community. Our drop-in services, we'll often partner with other agencies, councillors, mental health, whomever wants to be available to reach out to our guests. But it also provides the opportunity for people to connect with one another, to share, to learn more about their community, perhaps referrals to other services that they may be needing. So we feel that the Dick Bartlett Park facility would be most appropriate because of the kitchen or the little food vending aspect, as well as the washrooms. We also think that it's nice that it's not necessarily right downtown or right along the highway, but still very accessible to everybody who may have limitations, perhaps wheelchairs, need parking, things like that. It was kind of a recommendation from staff to propose to cancel it as it is a multi-day event and it may interfere with other events going on. We simply want to utilize the facilities whenever they are not already booked or whenever an event is not approved. So if an event were to be presented, say after perhaps we were approved to offer this, we would definitely make the facilities available to anybody. Now, of course, since we've closed and the disaster of the flood, there are more people out of their homes, there are more people without kitchen facilities to make prepared meals. We are so very thankful for the outside agencies that have been able to come in and help Samaritan's Purse, but particularly Red Cross and Salvation Army, who provided all these services, but we could not. We feel that as these services are now starting to dwindle and the need is still present, it's like our hands are tied, you know? We have these facilities and no way to operate and it's just a shame. So while we're not attached to the Dick Bartlett in particular, we're open to being able to operate anywhere. We're trying to find creative solutions with as minimal impact, negative impact as possible and as much positive outreach as possible. I would like to be able to offer these services until the end of September, considering these about fair weather months. And of course, we would still be looking for land and other opportunities with our trailer in that town as well. Yeah, any questions that you guys have?
That's right, I'm a councillor.
Yeah, this is a tough discussion to have. I'm just going to jump right in. I understand what it is you're trying to provide and I commend you for that. I am absolutely 100% against having that soup kitchen anywhere near child's facilities, anywhere near the rec center, anywhere near the ballpark, anywhere near any park because of the history. I don't want to see Dick Bartlett Park filled with needles. If you truly want to help the people in this community that have suffered, I would find a place down in South Ruckle or North Ruckle where the community that needs the help the most is located. Or I would suggest moving in with the food bank where they have guests that are registered and be on their property. But I think, and what I've seen is where the soup kitchen goes, problems follow. And we have created more victims in our community and in our downtown core as a result of the clients that you enable. And until we can get that under control, which I don't think is within our capacity, I think we're going to just exacerbate the problem more. And it's unfortunate that it has to be this way, but that's my opinion and that's from hearing on the streets. So I'm sorry, but that's, I can't vote for that unless you want to take it directly to the people that need the help. And that would be our residents that are in North and South Ruckle right now.
Yes, okay.
Oh, can I comment?
Oh, go ahead.
There's actually quite a lot to unpack there. I don't know if I could comment on every aspect of it. I quite strongly can confirm that any of the property that Whispers was maintaining was always cleaned. If there was needles, there were drop-off facilities and there were people to keep that area clean. I know that we get rolled in with the homeless camp that was located near to us, which unfortunately we did not manage or have any control over. I think in this case, it's not a possibility for a homeless camp to pop up there as there are already bylaw measures in place to prevent those such things from happening. And I just wanted to say too, that while we do get rolled in with the drug abuse element and the crime element, really, we don't discriminate our services and our services are open to all. We have so many seniors that not only utilize our services, but engage in our services, that provide the services, that use this as a way to brighten up their day because we're able to come out and socialize and connect and be a part of something that's really impactful. We are closely tied with the food bank just in terms of relationship and we'd love to be located somewhere up near there, but are needing just that extra bit of assistance in finding the appropriate land to operate from or a way to go about doing so. So while we are having these communicate conversations with these agencies and we'd love to be working closer together, there just seems to be a barrier there that we'd love to overcome and work with you guys to be able to address those concerns.
Yeah, and like I say, I understand your philosophy behind trying to help. And I think if you're helping seniors and our residents that are in need, I applaud you for that. But along with it comes another element. And we saw, we witnessed it downtown and we're witnessing it now where we're spread out in the community. And until you can take that under control and limit, restrict the people that are creating the problem. You have people that are violent, you have people that are high on drugs, you have people that are shooting up. And that is creating a huge, huge cost and impact to this community. And so I know you don't turn anybody away, but maybe you need to be more selective with the clients that you choose to help. And then maybe you'll get a more positive response from the community because right now I'm hearing that nobody wants it. Okay? So I'm just letting you know. That's just a recommendation on my part.
Councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Pramet. And thank you, Melissa, for bringing this request before council. I think it's important for us to debate it and to hear, you know, what you are providing in the service that you're struggling to provide in the community. But I think you've already partly answered one of the questions that I had, and that was how you are partnering with other agencies that are providing services to this segment of the population and whether or not you've engaged with them about being on board with working in, in a setting that is open air with, where, you know, potentially very highly confidential matters are being discussed with clients and might they, how might they feel about that? And then there's all of the other issues that, or some of the other issues that have been presented here, like, like the needles and the various other things. So I'm just wondering what your level of engagement has been with those other agencies?
I think we've always kind of been tied with other agencies. Anchors in particular, if you guys are kind of keen on the needle element, is an amazing organization that operates out of the Coopneys that drives all the way out this far to ensure that we also have services. And they really adhere to that element. Unfortunately, I think we get rolled in, you know, when you're helping everyone and there's people in that group that are considered undesirable by some, you end up taking on some of the shade of that. And I'm kind of proud that our organization does that a little bit. Unfortunately, I think the biggest detriment to this town is rumors and misinformation. And while I have come to council to talk many times before about how we do have rules, how we do enforce things where yes, our facility's open to anyone to come in the door, as soon as somebody has, you know, taken the wrong approach, has acted inappropriately, that we have been disrespectful even, we have the right to refuse service to anyone. And we maintain that, right? And we do ban certain individuals and particularly some who do get a lot of flak online for their behavior, and I agree, are perhaps not particularly welcome in our community. So we do get rolled into being the ones responsible or who are enabling. Unfortunately, I feel that we actually empower people to come out of a situation of poverty. It's almost like you're asking us to solve poverty and discrimination and issues that happen with those who are suffering from the disease of addiction. And unfortunately, we cannot do that. We do help people and we will enforce rules and we will do what we can to keep everyone safe in our space so that everyone can access our services. But I think there's definitely a bigger issue at hand that we cannot solve.
If I may just jump in again, I just was asking for clarification on the question of whether or not you would actually engage in this scenario, a potential open park situation with the other providers of these services?
Oh.
I just wanted to know that.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I've definitely let them know that this is something that we were pursuing and if anything, there's support to make it happen. So support to not only be there to help supervise and provide services, support from the food bank to then also provide supplies, to be able to provide these meals. I think we all feel that our services complement one another. And then if we can find well-rounded, community-based approaches, that we're going to be stronger in the end.
And they're, and they're okay with an open-air, public park scenario to provide those types of?
That's my understanding. Basically, all the word that we've seen is that you need to do something. We need to have services out there. It's a shame that there isn't a kitchen. It's a shame that there isn't a drop-in place for people to find help. And of course, people are trying to utilize our thrift store. In the meantime, hey, where can I print your resume? Hey, where can I find housing? Hey, where can I do this? And we do our best, but it's not the same as being able to sit down with people and provide a space and provide those connections. And I think we can do that.
Councillor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I spent a lot of time at the baseball fields this year playing baseball. And I can definitely concur with Councillor Hammett that the baseball league in particular is fed up with druggies in the dugouts. We come in, we have people a little bit peeing in there, sleeping in there, drug paraphernalia on a regular basis. And the city's actually spending money right now to lock up the dugouts at Angus McDonald's because of the problems we've had there. So to encourage this type of behavior even further in our parks, we already do a sweep for needles before we play. It's not acceptable and I'm fed up. So I was similar with Councillor Chapp. I wonder specifically, have you talked with the Red Cross about setting up at the Legion where the Red Cross is? Because I think it's excellent that you want to help the flood victims right now. And setting up at the Red Cross, I think it would be a great partnership for that.
Thank you. Actually, the Red Cross has been reaching out to us. They heard about our commercial kitchen and they want to be able to utilize it. They also haven't been able to find appropriate means to do that as well. So we are closely connected with them, communicating with them, and haven't been able to find a solution as of yet that seems cohesive. That's one thing that we were offering though, is at least our facilities or some means, like, hey, we can even run it. What do you want to see happen? So it's things like that just getting passed around and I haven't had anybody follow up with it, any specific ideas.
Interesting. You want to? Oh, sorry. It seems like an easy match. The Legion has a large parking lot for your food trailer. They also have a commercial kitchen in the Legion. So is there's no way that your volunteers could even provide services out of the commercial kitchen in the Legion of the Red Cross or park right there?
Yeah, the Legion kitchen does get booked quite regularly for events and whatnot. It does also have a rental price associated with it, all of which we'd be willing to consider. But it just hasn't been presented as an option. And with our kitchen trailer, unfortunately, while it is technically mobile, it's more like an Atco trailer. And so when it gets to its location, it needs water hookups, it needs power hookups, it requires a level of infrastructure in order to operate that we just can't seem to get to in terms of those short-term pop-up kinds of solutions. I also think that this might present a really good opportunity. If the city is already struggling with these areas being utilized in inappropriate ways, perhaps by having our services there and an added level of volunteerism and worker oversight and supervision, we could be doing the sweeps, we could ensure the park is clean. And perhaps something along those lines. If it's already an issue and the kitchen isn't there, then how come the kitchen is the issue? Is what I don't understand.
Councillor.
Thank you, Melissa. The services that you want to provide are commendable. And if a service that you want to provide to those most in need, unfortunately, because of the issues around drug abuse and violence and other issues, they all get locked in together. And I can't support either the use of our parks for purposes that you're wanting to do. I think you would be better served to try and make an arrangement with private property owner or with one of the other organizations that have been mentioned today. And it's really, it's really too bad that, that, that we can't, not we, I can't support what it is that you're asking.
Any other questions? Erin, thank you for the presentation.
Great.
Councillor.
I just have a statement.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry about it. I was going to say, can we release our paramedics back into the wild? But they already released themselves.
All right, moving on to item five, regional topics for discussion with Area D Director Russell.
I have none. I think we're well busy with what we've got on our heads.
Okay, thank you. Then we move on to presentations from staff, monthly highlight reports from department managers. Recommendation this committee, the whole receives a monthly highlight reports from department managers. Move over, please. Councillor.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was not quick enough to hop the hop here. And concerning the Area D report, I just want to commend Rowley for all the work that he's done in being a part of the group for the recovery process. And Rowley's really gone above and beyond in many ways. So I just really want to commend you and thank you for the continuing work that you're doing.
Any questions from the department?
Yeah, I actually have quite a few because like Rowley, our staff has been doing a lot since the flood. I mean, they, there's so many things on this report that require more than just a bullet point. So in general, I just wanted to highlight Forestry has instituted a category two burn ban, everything but small campfires. So I just think that's important for people to remember right now. I'm surprised you can even have small campfires. I guess that's with food. And within the city, I believe you have to have a permit for those as well. So just to remind people of that. There was reported in the paper also a fire on one of our electric poles. So I was just wondering if we could get a comment on how that happened. Quotes for the Wayfairing signage have come in. I'm just wondering if we can get some more info on that. Water leak and repair in Ruckle. I'm just wondering how the, if that was like one of our main lines, if that was a major, if there's any ongoing issues with our water lines in Ruckle after the flood. And the Tim Hortons development, I know we talked with staff earlier about trying to get access to the MOTI reports to find out about any traffic pattern changes. And I know that those were given to the developer. I don't know if the city has gotten those, but I'd be interested to know what the ministry has planned for any increased left-turn access, anything to help with the traffic that's going to be created at that point. That's four things. And there was one more, but I'll leave it at four.
Could we go item by item? Might be easier than.
Yeah.
Trying to go through the list.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, so fire on the pole, electric pole.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we did have some concerns, I guess, with some. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, we did have, um, some concerns, I guess, with some of the work that was, uh, in two locations, and that was one of the locations, and just with the additional load with the, uh, the store, the supermarket, we're, we're still investigating, but we believe there was a connection issue that caused that, that fire, so.
Was that some new work that had been done with the connect, the reconector project?
Yeah, that was, um, we moved some transformer banks and did some work, uh, through the voltage conversion, so.
Yeah.
So, it's not, um, a hundred percent confirmed, but we believe that it was, um, a connection issue then.
Is that some part of the contract?
Yes.
From the back of it?
We still have the whole back, and we're working through that right now, once we're confirmed, but we haven't a hundred percent confirmed, so.
Counselor Bubba, can you answer?
Well, it, it's an electrical question, so I, I just wondered if, if we were doing electrical, if I may still add and ask a question? An additional question? I'm just wondering about the substation down there in Rocco, is that offline now, or?
Sorry, the Fortis substation?
The substation, yeah.
Our, our switchyard has been rebuilt and is fully functioning.
So, that one is not being used by the city anymore, or?
Sorry.
Well, wasn't that, that switchyard there being used to take the power through?
Right, we had to, we had to bypass the switchyard during the flood event, because the controls and everything were submerged in water, so we had to rebuild that.
Right.
With our temporary electrician ease completed rebuilding, uh, all the controls and that, so it's, it's back online, it's under our protection now, so.
Okay, so it's above floodwater?
Correct, yes. And, uh, Fortis is currently dismantling their old substation, and they have a new one, uh, approaching.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Electric.
Electrical. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, commend the, um, city crews, the sat in that bucket, blazing friggin' sun, for hours and hours trying to get that, that, um, power back on, and everybody yells. And I've heard lots of comments throughout the community, um, one of them being, isn't there a shade umbrella for bucket trucks? And the other wanted a misty station. And I thought, that'll work out good. But yeah, just commendations to the electrical crew for, for going through what they did in order to get their power back on.
Thank you for that, that's, that's for our, uh, new hires, that we did this friggin' so.
Well, this is an initiation.
Yeah, it's an initiation. A new guy. Okay.
So, the second, the second question was about the wayfaring signage, um, you have three quotes that are in, how did they line up?
Ms. Page.
Ms. Page. Just point of clarification, when you say how did they line up, are you asking how similar they were? Uh, they were, they ranged, one was going double the others, one was in the middle, and then one was significantly lower, so that's sort of getting a report from you.
Okay, what company is that?
Capital Streets.
Have they been contracted?
Uh, it's, it's not a contract, it's just procurement.
And it hasn't been procured?
Yeah.
So, they're in the works?
Yeah, so this is for the signpost. Uh, as you remember last meeting, um, one of the questions was about the ornamental signposts, so this is the order for those ornamental signposts, which will be driving from Texas shortly.
And then the signs?
Uh, the signs will go on the posts once they're installed, yeah.
And have they made?
No, the signs have not made yet.
And they're being made locally?
Yep.
Very big.
Well, I, I mean, we always print signs locally.
Right, so.
Because we have a sign maker.
They will be up this summer, then?
Uh, that is the goal, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, number three.
Number three. Oh, the water repair leak in Rocco. How's our infrastructure doing there?
Um, it was a main leak, it was a service leak in Rocco, uh, so somebody did a demolition of the, uh.
Right. Which are.
Through the demolition permit and the process that goes along with that to, um, you know, try to stop, uh, that occurring, so.
So, it was repaired, and, uh, we're encouraging people to go through the, the permitting process
so we can avoid that in the future, so.
Number four.
Yeah. The MOTI reports for the Tim Hortons, have we been able to access those yet?
Well, I'll, I'll try and answer. I, I believe, Your Worship, that wherever the MOTI report is, um, went through to the architects, would have been between them and, uh.
Yeah.
And who've been, you know, approved. And so, MOTI, at the end of the day, um, what was presented to them was acceptable.
Sure, I'm just wondering, we need, we need to get access to those, so that we understand what our traffic pattern changes are going to be.
Um, I, I don't know if MOTI actually shares those types of things, because it's their reports, and so, um, it's something that we normally wouldn't gain access to, um, you know, that, that's their area of expertise.
It's not gonna be a secret, though, once they do it. It'd just be nice to know ahead of time.
Well, I would say that, uh, anybody that maybe wants to look for the report should maybe ask MOTI.
Yeah.
For the developer.
Or in the road.
Yeah.
It's our city's. Once the DCC, once the DCC has been approved, that's it. We're done.
You can still help us.
In which way? What do you want to do about it?
Because we're still feeling questions from the community that have got concerns about the traffic pattern.
Well, then the community should be questioning MOTI.
No, where are their representatives?
Why would we send individual community members to MOTI when we're the voice of the city?
Oh, we've approved the DCC.
And no, but we've approved something we haven't seen before, Worship.
We're not jurisdictional highway.
Exactly.
No, but we represent the people that live in this community.
Well, we have no jurisdiction.
We're not trying to change their plans, we just want to have some information. We need to have those, yeah.
Counselor Chippa.
Thank you, just to weigh in on that, um, thank you. What, what happens on Highway 3, uh, and with the traffic pattern changes there may very well impact many of the streets around that area. And, um, so I'm thinking that we have, we really should find out, and would it not be possible for us to maybe send a letter of request to either the developer or MOTI, just to, so that we've got a heads up?
Counselor Croft.
Yeah, I can understand the concerns, like what's the future gonna be, what's the traffic gonna be? It's a provincial highway, it's under the jurisdiction of MOTI, um, they will do what they do. Um, normally, we're not getting that information, because we don't need that information. Um, they're the experts, they're doing their job, they say it's good, um, and if we had that, what are, what are you gonna do with a report that says they'll put in a longer left turn or whatever? Right? Like, it's, it's just so far out of our jurisdiction. Doesn't make sense.
Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I totally agree with, uh, Counselor Croft. Uh, I've been asked, uh, about the same issue, and what I, my reply has been that it's, the city's only involvement in that, uh, development was the, um, permit on forming character, and it was a private, it's private property, it's zoned correctly, and Ministry of Transportation and Highways has signed off on it, and that's their jurisdiction, not ours. And I've also advised that, um, the, uh, entrance into the parking lot from the east and west sides is going to be due, uh, somewhat north. So, quite frankly, um, uh, I, I would like it if MOTI was sticking their nose, and they do, I guess, return to type on, on some, some developments that have to be signed off on. Um, but there's no, there's no obligation on the party to share their information with us, although we could ask for it.
Counselor Hammett, can you go first?
So, regarding the information that we're, we're getting, we're asking for their recommendations, we're not asking to interfere or inject. Sometimes counsel feels like they're in a vacuum. I feel like I'm living in a vacuum sometimes by not having some of this information. And one of the biggest complaints we're getting from the community is lack of communication. That is a real, real downfall on our part, and not getting the information out. But we can't get the information out if we don't know it. So, when I get asked, okay, well, you know, if Tim's is going here, how's it gonna look? I'd be, I'd like to be able to tell people not to worry that MOTI's got a control, there's gonna be a longer left-hand turn, or there's gonna be whatever. I understand the decision belongs to MOTI, I'm not gonna try and change the decision, but I'd like to have some information to give to the community. And I, and I don't want to live in a vacuum.
Counselor Thompson.
And I, I hear what you're, you're saying, and I think that what, what the city needs to do then is ask the specific information that they want to know, such as what you've just said.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I just checked with our development manager, um, we need that quickly. Um, she busy says there is no traffic study done on this, because there's no turn-ins from the highway directly to Tim Hortons, so there's no big study on it. It was simply sent to MOTI for approval of the property, because it is close, it's close proximity.
Thank you. Counselor Page.
Could we then ask for a traffic study? Because, no?
Absolutely not.
Because I think my concern along, uh, as well as many others in the community, uh, when we look at the traffic that goes down that road, especially in the summer, with all the travel trailers and everything else, uh, people making a left-hand turn to get into, uh, the parking lot there, the traffic could be backed up, like, up the hill. And, uh, and the other way, we've got basically two short blocks, we could be looking at an absolute traffic nightmare there. And I would, I was hoping, I mean, I thought that their decision to go ahead with this would have been based on concrete numbers of, uh, you know, vehicles going by, they usually have the guys out there clicking, taking, taking the numbers. I don't know how they could make a decision like this on a major highway without actually having dentistry account. And, and furthermore, I do believe that as, um, um, elected officials for the city, we should have a say in what impacts our community, um, rather than just having the province, uh, you know, make decisions for us and us having absolutely no say in that.
Counselor Hammett.
So, okay, so this is a done deal, I think that we can do now is sit and watch and see what happens and monitor it. Is there an opportunity to go back to MOTI later and say that this isn't working perfectly? If it does create problems and it creates congestion, can we, as a council, go back to MOTI and say, we'd like you to look at putting in a longer left-hand turn or making some adjustments? Because you've already approved the first, the first approval has gone through, but it's not working, so can we please get that updated? So, is that something we can do later?
Or does it have to be a certainty before they'll do that? Your Worship, I'm not sure what MOTI policies are, um, you know, it is, it is their purveyance to, um, approve or disapprove, uh, things along the arterial highway. So, um, I guess if there was some huge issues in that, you know, it could be, it could be a principal issue with MOTI, and they could do some investigation.
Yeah, give her a.
Until that time.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we're, we're assuming that we're gonna have problems, um, when it's not even built yet.
Yeah. We can't go on the could-be's and possible's, so. Counselor Bubba.
Yeah, first of all, I disagree, we absolutely have to go on the could-be's, we have to have foresight for the community, being reactive rather than preventative is not, not a good way to operate. Um, but I, I, you know, I'm also thinking forward that we are going to have more development along our highway in the next year. I can definitely see that happening with the increase in, um, inquiries that we've had in our engineering and development department, um, with developers taking interest in our community, it's just, it's gonna start happening quite quickly, I think. And we might be looking for more studies than just down at that spot, we might have to have a study all along our highway corridor here in the city in the next year, with different developments going in. And I know, um, out town, that the, uh, the developers do have to have those studies in place, that they're looking for a left-hand turn lane off the highway to put anyone in. So, we might, uh, we might have to look at that in the future, and I'm sure that a council plans to motion for staff to go to MOTI and to, uh, enter into communications with them about a study that that could be done, but maybe it will be something six months down the road from now. If nobody has any further questions on that item, no, there was one more item I had a question on.
General.
Go ahead.
What I stood up originally was because we were discussing electrical. I was gonna bring this up in the question period, but this is also a part of what I'm gonna say, so I'll hit you with it now. Um, I detect a kind of pattern here. Forces outside of our community, uh, end up foisting upon us change that we weren't prepared for, we didn't plan ahead for, and we're kind of stuck with, uh, whether it's cannabis production, et cetera, et cetera, and, and people don't like it, or some, some people don't like it, whether I agree or not, I get what you mean. Now we have this. Uh, as was said the last time this came up, the time to actually do some sort of ban on drive-throughs, well, that was before, you can't do it after somebody's already started planning. And yes, you really don't have much control over whether or not this is gonna happen, unless you really go and shake the tree. And what's that gonna look like to businesses who want a transplant here? I mean, really, it's, it's not your fault, because it is gonna be a schmuzzle, I know that, and everybody knows that, but we're kind of stuck with it. So, here's something else that's electrical-related, that you can get ahead of, because if you don't, you'll be reacting to this, too. Last week, I had a resident actually knock on her door, she came to me with this, and I told her she should come to you with this. But, one of the businesses in town has a Bitcoin mining operation going on on their property. Now, there's nothing illegal about that, but two things about Bitcoin mining that you should be aware of, because you are, this community's, wise your heads. One, there's a droning noise that you can't get rid of from all the fans, and some people find that unacceptable, and others don't care, but it will be an issue. And two, wherever Bitcoin mining operations go into small communities, what happens is they lean on the electrical system. They lean on the electrical system really hard, and what happens is, if there's enough of them, they end up being the prime customer for whatever electrical utility that is. Guess what happens when that electrical utility finds that they can't service that request? They have to either invest in new infrastructure, or buy more high-priced electricity from somewhere else, and guess what happens to everybody's rights? Okay, so, this is the scenario we're gonna be facing, we're all gonna be facing with a lot. People sell their houses in Vancouver for two million bucks, or in the Okanagan for two million bucks, they come here, they can buy a place, a really nice place, for four hundred grand, they still have over a million bucks in their pocket, but what are they gonna do? Well, gee whiz, we can set up a Bitcoin mining operation in a nice forty-by-sixty building on our property, and it's not hurting anybody, right? Well, who are they buying their electricity from? It's either Fortis or it's the city. Okay, what happens to the city if four or five of these people set up operations within the city limits? What happens to our electrical system? This is something that I would rather, I'm sure other people would rather see you get ahead of and plan for, rather than two or three years down the road, you've got three or four of these operations going, and now you're struggling to feed them, and, uh, how are we gonna do that? And you're watching the electrical use go through the roof, because one little Bitcoin mining operation can use more electricity than five towns of the size. So, what's gonna happen? You should get ahead of this now, before you're having this discussion later on, and it won't be the traffic in a one or two-block radius in one part of town, it'll be everybody's electrical. Eric, that's my piece. Left Sean's GFTV factor. Sorry, forgot that.
A good point, Melissa.
Yeah, very good point.
So, can, can we get staff to comment on that? Because that, I know that he's right, uh, there's a Bitcoin mine out at the lake, and it uses more power than all of Nelson on its coldest day of the year. It, and that, that's where they set up, because it's where the, the main power lines go through, these things draw a lot of power, he's not exaggerating. He's not exaggerating. So that is something to consider. And I'm just wondering if our electrical department has considered that.
Yeah, because I'd heard about this operation as well. Somebody mentioned it.
It's in the city.
Within the city.
There's a large mine out at the lake, but people can set up in their houses. You just buy these computers and you set them up.
Oh, there's town to town.
Any comments?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's why, why I could spend an hour going over the details of the bit mining and the effects on the electrical system. We were working with a company in town that we felt fit their business. It wasn't specifically to run, you know, a bit mining company. So we felt we were within our parameters. They've been great to deal with and the amount of electricity that we can provide without substantial upgrades to our system. Yeah, I, I would just say to council that if, if you want further information, we can discuss. But I don't think it's a public piece that I can go into all the details of how we came to the understanding that we're currently under with this, this company. But we did consider a lot of the aspects or all the aspects that Mr. Johnson did talk about, so.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city works manager. So I'm not sure the size of that particular Bitcoin mining operation, but what I am curious of is in your study and work on this, how many Bitcoin mining operations could this city handle before we start to basically burst at the seams like?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It depends on the proximity to the power source, the primary line. There's, there's a lot of factors that, that come into the support, I guess, that we would be able to provide and how many. So if, you know, a single residence wanted to put their garage full of bit miners, there's bylaws in place that would stop that from happening. But as a commercial institution or a company that wanted to, I guess, start a bit mining company in certain areas, they would be, I guess, they would have to do the upgrades to the system. But there's a lot, like you say, Fordis supplies us with a certain amount of power. We would have to secure that. We would have to make sure the system couldn't supply that safely. There's carbonics to think about and there's, it's, it's a complex question, I guess. We worked with our engineers to see if we could even provide them. And I think, again, the company was very understanding. We're trying to support the company and their venture to, you know, their business and what they're doing without putting everybody else at risk. So they do have limitations on the power supply that we can offer them and they're working within that, so.
Okay, so in, in the future, if the tariff wars become really bad and businesses such as Interfor or Rockwool need to diversify to make better use of their facilities, they can't sell the lumber that they've got, but they have this facility. It's right next to a switchyard, you know. They can do the calculus too. At one point, they were talking about a cogeneration plan here, which didn't happen. But that would be a money-making opportunity for them. I'm just saying that, you know, businesses will diversify if needed and if they have the facilities and it's at easy access, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just, I think it's, you know, it's good that you're actually working with this, but we should have an idea of what the ultimate cost is and how many we can... Because essentially, they could literally buy us out. If they came to, if it came down to it, they'd be making more money than anybody in town and they kind of own the electrical grid because of their main customers. And if people got upset, they could just start buying properties like Ruffle over here. There's probably a lot of properties in Ruffle that would go for a song that would be really close to the electrical grid. So think about that. I mean, really, I hate to say that I'm actually paving a way for these people and moving them to game mine, but, you know, if I was them, I'd be looking at Ruffle going, oh, I can buy a whole block for like dirt cheap, comparatively speaking, it's money out of my pocket and then still set up. And I'll be like across the street from the Transformers. So anyways, that's it. Didn't mean scary, but.
Okay.
So for financial services, consultation with investment advisors regarding development of an investment policy and plan. If we get more information on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, because we're starting to hold a lot of cash with respect to our reserves and we're, we're holding a lot of cash currently, just looking at other opportunities to, to invest that money, diversify a bit, reduce our risk and maybe increase our returns. So I'll be looking at probably bringing an investment policy forward before we were to move ahead with anything.
How about Bitcoin mining?
That's in camera, Les. Just kidding.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those papers. Anyone else? All right, moving on to number eight. The subject matter is the annual permissive tax exemption bylaw 2049 from our chief financial officer. Recommendation is a committee that will recommend that council give first three readings to bylaw 2049, 2019 permissive tax exemption at the August 20th through the meeting of council. Over to Councillor Thompson. Any other?
I, I just have a comment to make that I will be removing the senior citizens' location in the park when I bring this forward for first three readings.
Okay, any other? Hearing that, all those papers. Anyone opposed? Eric. Information items from our CFO for revitalization tax exemptions. Recommendation is committee that will receive a memorandum from the CFO regarding tax revitalization bylaw for information and discussion. Over please. Councillor Hammett, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think staff's done some great work on this. It looks like there's a lot of things to be considered and a lot of flexibility that we could have with this bylaw. It's something that we really need to consider. You know, our endgame, what, what do we want to generate from this? And I saw in here that staff also had a concern about meeting the timelines of October, that this might not create the desired effect that we're looking for because of the timelines. So I think Councillor Hammett brought forward an excellent idea by doing this and I'm just wondering what staff's recommendations are to help businesses want to invest in, end their renovations after the flood while still meeting those timelines. And also, I think it would be a great opportunity to help the landlords that have rental properties because we're in dire need of rental properties. And if we can somehow use this for the landlords that haven't been able to get anything through DFA, to help them get back on their feet and rent out their properties again. If that's something that can be considered very well.
Councillor Trippin.
Thank you, Mayor Connaught. Yeah, I agree with Councillor Butler there. And I see that the, that staff was maybe trying to expand the scope of this revitalization tax exemption, you know, into residential as well. But noting this comment in one of the paragraphs that says, "Great deal of thoughts required to set parameters and properly tailor a bylaw." Otherwise, the, the feeling of staff was that the exemption program possibly wouldn't really generate or garner much uptake. And what I got to thinking was, what if council were to think about an actual, maybe form a character design? I think we've talked about that before. What maybe council might be prepared to come up with something that was a little different? Maybe that would give Grand Forks some sort of a unique brand? And if we could implement that with this revitalization tax exemption, then that might be incentive to get everybody on board. I think we'd want to work or have DBA do some research on this. DBA possibly in conjunction with the chamber and see what may, what opportunities might be there to do something like that.
Councillor Hammett.
Yeah, I can see that the world of work went into this. And I think the form and character is in when they talk about the facades. So I think in our OCP, there is a theme and so that's already being determined. So hopefully, wall businesses are renovating right now and under reconstruction. They can incorporate this tax exemption to expand the exterior of their building and hopefully we can get new facades and some new signage that's consistent, you know, with the form and character that we'd like to see downtown. The draft bylaw that I saw doesn't look that terribly complicated. I think it'll be easy enough for us on our part to vote for this to go through. So I'm hoping that we can see this bylaw be implemented before October 31st and we've given the business owners, landlords enough time to put their applications in. So I think the groundwork has already been done. Maybe a bit of tweaking and some fine tuning.
Mr. Butler.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff. Is there any way under the legislation that we can backdate any renovations that are done, you know, after the date of the flood? Because it seems like until this bylaw is in effect, we can't give them credit for any of the renovations that they've done up until that point. And I know a lot of businesses have already started, so that'd be unfortunate.
Councillor Smith.
Yes, I have posed that question and I've been advised that this bylaw, with respect to that and other issues, should probably go get clear, get legal consultation on before we were to move ahead with something like that.
Councillor Trippin.
Yeah, and thank you, Councillor Hammett, for mentioning about the OCP and the form and character that's in there. But I think I was thinking something just a little bit more specific than that for the downtown core. Like we were to go, if some kind of a specific theme was, you know, we decided on something. Different communities have done different things. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, Leavenworth and places like that. And, and I just don't know if that's something, I mean, obviously, that's going to slow things down because it would require, you know, getting additional things in place there. And so we wouldn't necessarily want to do that if we really want to move this orbit by October. But, you know, when they're saying that they need a lot more time to properly structure this, I'm just wondering if consideration for those kinds of things is appropriate for us to do now? Or just get her in and see how things go?
You just reminded me, when we were at the AKBLG last year, I spoke with Mayor Roseland and they'd hired a consultant to help them with their revitalization downtown. And Roseland's done a beautiful job with their heritage component. And she was really happy with the consultant that they'd hired to help their downtown businesses with that. And she said she'd be willing to give us that information if we ever wanted it.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, your mayor. Your mayor. Through you to our CFO. The exemption, as I understand it, on, on the, on the business community would be the variance of the, the assessed value that we taxed on in 2018 and any, or any improvements that were added on to that for 2019. And it would be the difference that in the, in the assessments that would be subject to the exemption by law. Am I correct in that? Yes, that's correct. Well, it would be, it would be laid out in the, in the bylaw itself and it would be, you'd have your baseline year, which is the year of the tax assessment before the, before the work is done, compared with the increase in the assessed value after the work is done. So not necessarily 2018, 2019, but whatever, yeah, whatever, you know, whenever it's implemented. So hypothetically, a business does renovations and the assessment on that is X number of dollars. And they continue their renovations into the following year. Does that, does that increase also apply? Through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding of what most municipalities have done is they, they look at granting the exemption once all the renovations have been completed. But I, I expect that you, and we have to check with legal on this, but we, it's possible, I suppose, to write the bylaw so that you could factor in something there to... But it's, it seems quite unusual to do it that way. Complicated. Amazing.
Councillor Butler.
The other thing I think we're being asked to consider is whether or not the tax exemption could be carried forward to any future property owners. And my initial reaction is I think that would be a good idea to help encourage sales if businesses do want to, to sell. I mean, they've been through a lot and to help them with selling their businesses, I think that would be helpful. Anybody else have ideas on that?
Councillor Hammett, Councillor.
Well, part of the problem too is that all the property values are commented at this point. And it's gonna be very hard if any landlords downtown had any plans of selling their properties in the near future, at least until there's some guarantee and they feel secure that this is not gonna be a repeat. Now, we know that council has priorities and one of them is to protect the downtown. But until we've proven that to landlords and to the, to the market in general, there's gonna be some hesitation on, you know, the pricing of, of buildings and whether or not they can sell. So their assessed value, as it sits right now, is what was taken in last year, right, last October. So if they were to rebuild their building and put the, whatever their assessed value increases to next year, the difference will be tax exempted. But I guess it's not really fair because it has substantial decreases in their assessed value at this point that they're being taxed on what was assessed until October 31st last year. And so next year, when they rebuild it back up again, it might not really see any savings because their tax exempt, their, their assessed value may be back to where it was before now that they've done the improvements. So perhaps it might be better to go on the value of their improvements. Like as in Creston's bylaw, it was based on how much they spent on the improvements for the... So they take out a building permit and they have to have value. Like we know that how much money has been spent on the value of, in the development applications issued was 47, 4.7 million dollars, right? That's the value of new construction or renovations. Same thing applies with taking out a building permit on buildings. You have to put a value to it.
Councillor Trippin.
So if this bylaw were to be amended to include residential, would that be something that we could maybe see back at the next meeting?
Can I just speak on that for a second? Well, I just wanna ask a question. Okay. Through to the CFO, what Creston did, is that? A little? A little bit. What was it?
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's a question that I've been trying to get an answer to and that's why I've been advised that we should pass any bylaw over, you know, for, for a legal confirmation.
With regards to residential versus commercial, I don't think that you can make the, like, we have form and character downtown board. You may want to do a separate section for the residential because they're not always gonna fit into that form and character, depending on the house. Where is it?
Selective.
They're the same principles.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those papers. Okay, forward. Eric. All right. Question in the public. Here enough, motion to it. Mr. Mayor, I think you may have said.
We have the fall fair, I think we still.
So there's an item on your desk already. We have the fall fair, it came late regarding the... We have the Fall Fair, it came late regarding the request that council had to, for the Fall Fair to quickly come and speak to that item from the last meeting. I'd like to call it a recess, please.
I will recall this meeting to order once Councilor Hammond, as we turn to the chambers. And just so that, that you're aware, Mayor was not feeling well, and so we've called the ambulance, and he's probably seen that he's been taken to the hospital.
Precautionary.
Precautionary. And as a result, I will be the acting mayor and chair in the balance of this meeting and the rest of today's meetings. So I think that Councilor Hammond's staff, I will recall this meeting back to order. And I will recognize Dana O'Donnell from the Fall Fair to make a presentation on Ask Council on the questions that they do.
Good morning, members of council. My name is Dana O'Donnell. I'm the president of the Grand Forks District Fall Fair, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. Today, I'm here to ask for some financial help for the Fall Fair, and I'm asking for support in helping us with the cost of our street banner. Last year was a very difficult year for the fair, but with the support of the businesses, the city of Grand Forks, volunteers, and the many people that attended the fair, the fair had almost 2,000 attendees, and it was a smashing success. This year, we're increasing the number of grounds in our demolition derby, increasing the size of our animal exhibit, and we're moving the exhibition hall back into the Curran Rink Arena. The street banner is an excellent way to advertise this event as people move through the city. On September 8th and 9th, we'll be holding the Grand Forks District Fall Fair, which started 108 years ago, and we've faced many challenges along the way this year. Our community has stepped up. This year's group of volunteers has been amazing, and we've spent countless hours in planning. Unfortunately, we've not been able to reach our financial goals. Normally, we have more revenue coming in from advertising in our handbook, but with this year's flooding taking place, it was the same time, and we were reaching out to businesses in the community for support. Businesses that we were hoping to receive help from were affected, and we did not feel it right in asking them for funds at that time. We did receive a VC gaming grant this year, but it was half of what we requested. The fair is having a fundraiser this summer with our Drive For The Day raffle and raffle for quilts as well. We've reached out to the RDKB for help, but we have not heard back from them other than they've received our request. We have had budget meetings to stay on track of our plans, and the cost of the street banner still needs to be covered. We have a banner, but it is difficult to read, and the dates need to be changed. We're hoping that the city of Grand Forks can help us with this expense. We request that the council for the city of Grand Forks adopt a resolution that it will support the Fall Fair with $1,365 to help us cover this expense, which is less than what we had originally asked for. Thank you for your time this morning, and we look forward to seeing you all at the Fall Fair.
Councilor Hammond?
Yeah, thanks, Dana, for the presentation, and I'm excited to, I had to leave for a family emergency last year, so I was unable to be at the event and see the demolition derby and everything else that happened. And I know you had your struggles last year. So the sixteen hundred is now thirteen hundred and change.
Yes.
And I'm just, a couple of questions. Are you having Alpine Science design your?
Yes.
Banner? So the Downtown Business Association just had one created for this event that took place on Friday, but they wanna be able to use it next year as well for any other events. So what they've done is they've got the actual, like, I know your theme changes and the date changes. There's ways to do it so that you can reuse the banner. So if you talk to SHAD, you might wanna get your logo put in there so it's permanent, but you can get the peel off dates and have a section at the other side for your theme, and then you can repurpose that banner for probably next year. At least you'll get at least two years worth of work out, use out of it. So that would just be my recommendation. I'm in support of, of putting that forward for you.
The donation that the city gave us last year is for $1,600, and that went to perimeter fencing and already fixing the existing banner that we had. So the banner has already been reused a few times.
Okay.
And SHAD is designing for a legible banner for a lower cost, that we will be able to change the dates on next year.
Councilor Trump?
Thanks, Dana, for coming with your presentation, and I'm certainly in favor of this as well, providing the funding for you for the banner. And I, I also do like Councilor Hammond's idea, if it can be for, at least, that made for a few years, repurposed for a few years. But I just have one question about the, the demolition derby. You're mentioning that you've got a few more, I guess, heat or whatever going in on that. And the area that was used, we were there last year, and it was so much fun to watch. But we were thinking that it was a fairly small area, and the cars ended up kind of getting just bound up in one another within a very short period of time. Are you thinking of expanding that area at all? And then what's that do with perimeter fencing and all of the other things you may need to, how that happen?
The derby committee is expanding the actual area of the demolition ring.
Okay.
I don't know the exact dimensions, but it'll be almost double of what it was to accommodate our new truck heat, so we'll be happy. And we did receive VC gaming grant funds, and so part of the funds are going to be going to help with the perimeter fencing for that.
Thank you.
Councilor Butler?
Yeah, thanks for coming and presenting to us. It's nice to hear you guys are doing so well, and I know you're doing a great job of managing it. And I'm comfortable with putting forward a motion now. This was presented to us before, and I think I've grown in agreement that we've, we're just, you know, it's a small amount of money to put towards an event that we really need right now. After the floods, we need to celebrate these type of events, and losing the GFI was really sad. So anything we can do to help out the other events, I would fully support, and somebody behind me wants to talk.
Dana.
Okay, and then I'll put forward that motion if I can. I guess we put it forward to tonight's meeting.
So Dana?
Thanks. Is it Miss Acting Mayor? Is that how this goes?
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor?
Acting Mayor.
Thank you, through you. Will it be possible to use the city of Grand Forks' branding on this? Because that's what we've done with the TBA recently, too, and kind of in support of some funds there, to, to have that, more or less our logo on there and our branding along with some other form, and then, of course, with the changeable format so it can be reused year after year?
I think that's quite fair, and I will put that forward to SHAD to add to the Grand Forks city logo, and you do, in fact, help us with the cost.
Awesome.
Okay.
Councilor Butler, did you wanna put forward a motion?
For tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
So I don't know if I, I probably don't need to repeat that for staff. I'm sure they understand the amount and to put it forward to tonight's meeting. And being the clear of all, we don't need a secondary on the motion. So if anyone just wants to discuss it, and then we can vote.
Thank you, Dana. Anybody have any questions? Then I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? opposed? motion taken?
Thank you very much.
For the questions from the gallery? James?
Nope. Agree button?
The big one, the bottom.
The big green. Doesn't look like a button, it's just.
The obvious one, right here. Good morning, Acting Mayor and councillors. My name is Nigel James, and I've been a resident of Grand Forks for 10 years. Comment made earlier on, I believe, the correct thing is, yes, it's Mr. Mayor for a gentleman and Madam Mayor for a baby. However, as I understand, Robert's laws of order, the person who is conducting the meeting is a chairman irrespective of gender. What I would like to, I came across this, I've got a CD copy of this on Friday. It concerns the community center plans or proposal, et cetera. A year and a half ago, you authorized, the council, the director of area, Dee Anne, Community Futures, to get on with it and produce a report, et cetera. And here's the report. It took a year and a half to get to my hands. It's been published, published, I think, for three months. The, the report's self-explanatory, and I think very complete in all respects. The only thing that has, as I see it, that has not happened, and it's mentioned in the report, is that the public has not been, public at large has not been consulted. Admittedly, the various groups have been consulted, and people have been talking about it, no doubt, but have been talking about it probably since 1897, when this corporation was first formed, I should think. Anyway, here's a chance for us to get on with it and to get things speeded up. My flash of inspiration is that in October, as you probably all know, there's gonna be a lecture for the council. And adjacent to that, you could have a simple question for the public to go along and fill in the form and just say, yes or no, having a, a community center. And then the public would have been consulted, and the next step would have taken, would be completed by mid, mid-October. It's just a, a way of speeding things up, in my view, and minimal cost probably as well.
Mr. James, Councilor Hammond would like to respond to that, your concern there?
Sure, please, yes. You wanted to switch off?
Yeah, good. So I believe, Community Futures, when they were putting this proposal together, and they did put out a public survey, and they did consult with the public right from the get-go. So I remember a year ago, survey going out to the community, asking for their input on what they wanted to see in a community center. So people did have an opportunity to speak then, but I'm sure, once they have the final designs, because it's just been preliminary right now. But Dana, did you wanna say?
Thanks, through you, through you, Adam Acting Mayor, who got this? Yes, all right, I gotta learn this. Yeah, so the, the current phase where Community Futures is at is they're working on getting grant funding approved for a feasibility study, a proper feasibility study. They have consulted with key stakeholders of the community, but not everybody within the community. So currently, the, the next step is to see if it's even a viable choice to potentially put it there, and then after that, there would be more engagement with the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. James. You can turn your mic back on.
Back on, sort of. Yeah, it works here. Thank you. Yeah, I hadn't realized that, I must have been asleep at the time when the survey came out in some months ago, I guess, but I hadn't seen that. That was my fault in that case. And in fact, it, it does mention that the, excuse me. I have a problem with science. A lot of people do. It mentions that, yes, they will be going and asking other things and developing the process. It's, the one thing that I feel is that if we take it too slowly, it'll lose momentum. We've got to keep at it in order to make it succeed, and I only hope that it does succeed. It was about the first thing I asked when I came to Grand Forks and said, where's the community center? And they said, there isn't one. And I couldn't believe my ears. But it does mention that, that the public at large will need to be consulted and defined more clearly, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, I guess, well covered. The only other point I do have is it's mentioned throughout in this report that consultation between different groups is very important. And I would have thought concerning Highway 3 and turn offs and turn ones to Highway 3, more and more consultation between Highway 3 and the city would be of benefit because talk is much better than more. Thank you very much.
Councilor Trump?
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Mayor, Acting Mayor. I think I got it right. Yeah, just wanted to mention, Nigel, if you're interested in providing any more input, you might wanna get ahold of Jennifer Wetmore at Community Futures, or Rolly Russell.
Yeah.
And you could probably speak to them personally, and they would be willing to listen. In terms of communication with those groups, I think they've been, they've come to us several times and have been speaking about it. So I think that, that is definitely happening with council. So you can be assured of that.
They stress it most strongly in here, that consultation's gotta happen, otherwise
And, and they're on, they're on that.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. That's Johnson, GFTB.ca, Madam Mayor. Along the same lines, five, six years ago, this town had more venues than it does now. I mean, we used to have Studio B. Well, even if we had Studio B, it would be a disaster right now because it was a flood zone. We used to have the Wildlife Hall, and you guys let the church take on over, okay? So now we don't have the senior center at City Park, that's booped. And it's actually one of the most well-used venues in town. Mr. White told me that they had to refund 19 prepaid events. Now they're looking for another place. So I know that it's not, or business per se, not like a community center or whatever, but what I would ask is that if they come to the city to ask for a piece of property or help with whatever, do please smile fondly upon their endeavors and help them in any way they can, because we really don't have that many venues to do things in anymore. That's all.
Mr. Butler?
Thanks through you, Madam Mayor. That is something that we've been considering in our housing options, as well as ways that council can support property owners with renovations, not just through revitalization, tax exemption bylaws, but any other encouragement we can give them to develop unused pieces of their property for not just rentals, but also spaces for community events. There, there's other options in town here that just aren't being used because of needed upgrades. And I think of the ballroom above the health food store. It's gorgeous and never used, meets new fire escape and steps and, you know, the upstairs ball, is it? I know there's issues with the noise from people walking and downstairs tenants, but you know what? There's places like this around town that we can encourage landlords to find solutions to, to be able to utilize them, yeah.
Most people have never seen the ballroom. What Clint used to say was, he has renters in there, he can't have, be things running into the evening.
I know.
It's really unfortunate, because if people knew what's up there.
You'd think you were in France or something. It's beautiful.
Yeah, it is.
Don't even know where it is.
Yeah.
The Navy's building, the second floor.
Exactly.
It's got a sprung steel, a sprung dance floor, a pressed-in roof. It's a real dance floor.
It's hard to accessible because it's, if you're able-bodied, you're okay, because it's all upstairs.
It used to be the Masala Hall. Councilor Trump?
Thank you, and I'm actually interested, if there's an appetite for council, to revisit the revitalization tax exemption information that we received. We, that was kind of truncated, I think, because of the, because of Mayor Condon's situation. And I was just hoping that possibly we could just go back to that, maybe get some further information. I, I understand that it was Ms. Robles who worked on that and put that information together. I, I think if we're gonna do anything with this, we might wanna look at trying to nail something down and possibly put forward some sort of a resolution to get this going. But I'd like to explore with her, have her maybe give us some more information on the quote-unquote residential piece, and if, as Councilor Butler was saying, that would only just apply to landlords, or if it's going to hang up this. or if it's going to hang up this bylaw. So anyway, maybe, Ms. Rowe, if you could give us a bit more information on the research that you did?
I think that's a good idea to bring it back. And I know that in her report, she's got several questions that she's looking for answers to. And I think that this is a good opportunity for her. I'd like to see her ask the questions and for Council to discuss and give her direction.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Yes, what I was looking for here was, because this is kind of a one-shot deal to do a proper revitalization tax exemption rather than just limit it to the facades and improvements in the downtown area, there's an opportunity for Council to broaden this and meet some of the objectives of the OCP. So what I'd like to find out is what Council, how Council would like to move ahead with this and what they would like to include in it. And then we can write the bylaw to address that. At this point in time, it will be difficult to put something in place, I think, to meet the October 31st deadline for BC assessment because these agreements have to be entered into with all the individual property owners and also just the timeframe for passing the bylaw. So it might be something for Council to consider to spend a bit more time and have this in place for next year rather than push, you know, out too quickly and end up with, you know, an incomplete, you know, a bylaw that doesn't address everything that Council might want it to address.
Just a question to you, Juliette. If that's what Council chooses to do, that might be more advantageous to the property owners if their assessed value would be at... What is it, October 31st is their cut-off date? Or July 1st? And then they have another date that they assess the values? So, you know, people could appeal?
That's right, because their assessment, the next assessment will be a lot lower. October 31st assessment will be a lot lower.
Yeah.
Than when it will be by next year when the improvements have been made. So you're right.
There's no rush?
No. But we could get that...
No.
Is there any way that we can get this messaging out to the landlords? I mean, Downtown Business Association can set a communication piece to their members, which are primarily, some are business owners, some are landlords, it's a mix. But not necessarily all of landlords because they only deal with the people that they have immediate direct contact with to let them know that this is in the works. But if the city has a list of all the businesses, the landlords, property owners that have been impacted, if they can let them know that this is... Or we can get something out in the paper or just some communication piece to let them know that this is something being worked on so that when they do do their renovations this year, they can feel free to go ahead and expand it that that will impact them for future years in their tax exemptions.
Councillor Trump?
Thank you. And I also think that what that might do, giving it a bit more time, is if we were, if we could run this through, I think, Jennifer Wetmore, who is the business lead, whatever business, commercial, whatever, her team lead for Economic Recovery. And she would probably be a very good resource as well and maybe could even have some input into what this bylaw looks like.
Councillor Hammond?
Yeah, we're in that Economic Recovery meeting on Wednesday afternoon with Provincial Province. And I'm on the Economic Recovery team as well. And so this has been discussed with Dale Wieldon and the other advisors that we have met with at these meetings. And it was definitely recommended this is something that should go forward. Absolutely. And they thought it was, you know, the timing is just perfect. So maybe perhaps on Wednesday afternoon, when we're at this recovery meeting, we can announce this and then expand on the details a little bit more as to how it's going to play out. And that, you know, it'll be better, it'll be more advantageous for the property owners to do it the year.
I'm going to, sir, I'm going to ask our CFO for comment on what has just been commented on, on this issue.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I was just going to comment that there probably, there should be some sort of public engagement with respect to this. So it might be a good plan to have a workshop to get input from the residents and see how they would like to, you know, whether they'd like to, you know, rental housing or other residential aspect of it, so. And that would be, and also we need some more involvement of planning with respect to that because it involves the OCP and that's not my area of expertise, so.
I'm going to recognize Kate from the Gazette.
Yes, thank you, Kate. Tell us if we can get that. So the impression I'm getting here is that Council generally seems to have some appetite to go forward with the revitalization tax exemption this summer. Is that... I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
But it doesn't look possible.
It doesn't look possible.
Time might be too short.
Yeah, so I guess then I'm interested in, to anyone who would like to answer, what I'm reading here in this document that's before me is that staff does not feel that that is necessarily wise. They say considerably more time is required to properly structure the program. Information uncovered thus far indicates these programs have very limited or no success in attracting investors. That's in the document in front of you. So why does Council feel that the staff recommendation is not... Hasn't worked?
I think, if I may, that is because, that is if we were going to try an IM, but that it's a place for the 2019 tax year. And I think what we've, the feeling it sends I'm getting from Council and our CFO in discussions is that rather than rushing through and not doing it more methodically with, and in a proper manner that's going to benefit the business community at this time, is that if we take our time and do it and adopt that bylaw in 2019, then it's going to benefit the business community and those property owners for the tax year 2020 because their assessment this year is going to be substantially lower. And if with the improvements that they've done and the increase in the assessed value for 2020, it will have a more positive impact on there, on them.
Plus, will we include residential or to whatever degree that looks like once we've had workshops and public input?
Okay, I'll record that, Councillor Hammond?
Thank you. And so I think, like, my preference would be to have two separate bylaws, one for commercial and one for residential. And they probably can base a lot of the information into the residential bylaw. But I think because of things like form and character, there might be some tweaking that needs to be done on the residential side. Like I said, it depends on the neighborhood that the building is being constructed in. You could follow the form and character that's applied for the downtown, then you'll put that house totally out of character for that neighborhood that it's in. So we might want to spend some more time and just tweak some of the wording a bit on the housing portion. The commercial portion, I think, is really important right now while we have to let people know that there's safe to go ahead and that this will be coming, that they'll be able to get tax exemption further down the road. And they'll get a bigger exemption if we wait until after October 31st, after this assessment's done. We can certainly try to pass it or then have it or work on it before then. But have it implemented for the 2019 tax year so that there's a much bigger differential in the assessed value to the current assessed value. Because as it sits right now, the assessed value would be very low.
Councillor, I will recognize you, but I think that our CFO wanted to respond to that.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that the actual revitalization bylaw is to establish the program, not to, well, not to... You wouldn't have a separate bylaw for residential. You wouldn't have it set up then for commercial. The actual program is established. So if you're going to, you know, establish it just for commercial, then you would have to then amend the bylaw to add any additional areas or types of zoning.
Would you have different requirements for commercial or residential in that bylaw?
Through you, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you would actually lay out the general guidelines and then you could actually, with the actual agreements with the property owners, you could restrict that even more. But the bylaw would lay out separate thresholds, separate criteria for residential as opposed to commercial.
Thank you, Councillor Butler?
Yeah, two questions. First, the CFO, sort of thinking back to what Kate asked in her research when she said that a lot of these bylaws didn't have the desired effect of reaching the goals that they were set out to accomplish. Just wondering if she discovered why other cities had had success with their bylaws and if it was through lack of planning and not being specific enough to create that incentive for their target audience and how we could do it in a way that it would be effective. Also, I remember when Assessment BC was here, I don't think, how much insight did they have onto improvements that people have done within their properties? Or are they just looking at the outside? Have they created more square footage? A lot of the investments that businesses and landlords would be making would be interior. And I'm just wondering if that is even viewed by Assessment BC as increasing their property value? I can see the facades on the outside possibly increasing that value, but is the money that they're investing actually even going to be recognized by BC Assessment?
BC Assessment, I believe, and our CFO, correct me if I'm wrong, copies of the building permits are sent, and they have a value on them.
Yeah, but do the interior...
For the interior as well.
Does it have an effect on their property value?
The other first part of the question. I was curious about that one as well because I wasn't sure where... Move the giveaway.
At this stage, I was actually hope-trust and was starting to do a little bit more investigation as to how effective they are. But I think the key is that it depends on the amount of thought and, you know, what, looking at the goals of Council and how they, you know, want to address those. I think that's where the success of the program would hinge on that.
Councillor Hammond?
Just one last comment on that. This bylaw, the idea, didn't get born out of my head. It was something that I stole from Preston at an economic development workshop that Councillor Thompson and I attended two years ago. And, well, actually, I did suggest a tax revitalization to the facilitator at the time. And across the room, there was people waving going, "We did it, we did it, we did it." And it was from Preston. And they said, "Don't spin your wheels creating a new one. We'll send you ours." And it's been extremely successful. They were just stoked at how people just jumped on because they weren't sure how it was going to be received. So they sent me their copies of their bylaws. This is the one that I sent to our staff. So they were very pleased with the outcome, how responsive the community was to participate in this. And then in talking with Dale Wieldon from BC, the BC Provincial Branch of the Economic Development, felt that it was something that was very successful in a lot of communities. And at a time like this here in Grand Forks, would be very valuable to them.
Kate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, through CFO. So the impression I'm getting is that a lot of the success of a bylaw like this comes down to the focus and specific intentions often directed by Council. So if we're looking at adopting this after an October 31st deadline, we're looking at entirely new Council potentially. So from a staff perspective, how would a bylaw or a program like this be impacted by an election before that date?
Our CFO?
That's actually a very good question. And I don't think I could answer it other than to say that, I mean, as staff, we could move ahead with part of the process. And I guess we just have to see what happens with the new Council.
A follow-up then, if I may. And pardon the, not that there's no point, but to use the term then, what point is there in getting started on this now then if we're looking at potentially and a completely new set of priorities before it's even adopted? If there's no push to get it done before then?
Councillor Butler?
I think a lot of the information that we're receiving on how to make our decisions would be there for the new Council. So when we have recommendations from the EOC with the different recovery teams, the reports that are coming to us would be available to the new Council. So they'd be facing their decisions based on recommendations from the same experts. So I think they'd probably come to similar conclusions. But I think it'd be even better because then you'd have another, you know, however many new people you've got adding their insight and their ideas. And when you put more heads together, you can come up with a better outcome, I think.
Fair enough, thank you.
Councillor Crone?
Yeah, just that the groundwork will be done. I can't see a new Council doing a 180. So I think it'll benefit it.
Mr. Johnson?
Do you really know how many people will be able to take advantage of this or this will apply to? So I was having a conversation with somebody who had a house in Ruffel and they're scrambling to get themselves four walls and a roof overhead before the winter comes. And so I updated them on BCSS this October 31st deadline. And said, "Well, you know, if you do it in a hurry, you could be facing a bigger tax bill come July 3rd than if you drag your feet for another month." She said, "Well, yeah, but winter's coming." So do you know how many people? Like, I mean, if you make this for 2019, it'll be the ones left standing.
No, it's everybody.
Pardon me?
Anybody can apply.
We don't know about the residential aspect yet.
Yeah, okay.
That hasn't been decided.
That hasn't been decided.
It's basically for the businesses at the moment.
Okay, okay. Because I suggested to her that, you know, this is totally facetious, but if we have 250% snowpack, we could get somebody from the Northwest Territories to come down and teach you how to make egg wounds? Anyways.
Councillor Hammond?
So my understanding now is that after October 31st, once this assessment timeline is passed, then there's new assessments for the next year. The next year's assessments are going to be considerably lower because right now you pay property taxes on a much higher value than what the actual property is because of the flood. So after the October 31st assessments are completed, your assessment values are going to be considerably lower. So if people apply after that bylaw's been in place, well, they can have their building permits. I'm sure that there's a way that they, if they've already done the work, they can apply to that because their assessed value will be substantially different in a year's time from what it will be October 31st. Because if they've been flooded and impacted, their value's diminished. Once the renovations are done, their values are going to increase.
Right.
And so they'll save the tax portion on that increased value of the assessment.
No, I get that. The person I was talking to was expecting to actually be back in some reasonable shape and appreciably back to where they were before October 31st. So, I mean, they're scrambling. And I'm sure there's a few that are. I know there's others that will be not able to do that.
Kate?
Yes, thank you, your worship, or, yes, your worship. You're the CFO. Your acting worship. Do you have an idea, Juliette? I know it could be kind of a moving target depending on how many businesses apply. But of a program like this and from the ones you've researched, are we looking at the impact of the tax exemption being like... of the tax exemption being like 5% of the commercial tax burden or more or, like, what is the financial actual impact, acknowledging that nobody's applied for it yet, so it could be moving, but ballpark?
Thank you. I, I don't myself know how many businesses would take advantage of it, but just to put it into perspective, it, it's only the municipal portion of taxes that's exempted, so, and the rate right now is $11 and something per thousand, so roughly say $12. So, so for 10, for every $10,000 of improvements that are, you know, increase in assessed rate and assessed value, that would amount to $120.
Right. Okay, so we're not talking like a huge, huge chunk out of the city's commercial tax revenue?
Well, I, I guess not necessarily, but that's, that's how much it would be, just to give you an idea of, in terms of numbers of, of businesses that could take advantage and how much their renovations cost. I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say too, just to add to what you said, Juliette, is that it's not the business owners, it's the property owners that have to make the application because they are the ones, property owner, that will be receiving the benefit. And in some cases, the property owner has a tenant in their commercial building. So just, so everybody's clear on that. It's not just a, a business that can make the application unless they also are the property owners.
That's just an FYI to feed into your calculus here.
Early in, when we had our first big meeting here and all the agencies were there, the woman from the DFA was basically pointing out that if you were offered, if you were offered flood insurance and you turned it down, then you weren't going to get DFA. Okay? Actually, now what they're saying is if flood insurance was available, not whether you were offered it or not, but it was available and you didn't have it, they aren't going to help you. So that means if, if it was available, it's like since 2015, as I understand it, that's when they started offering this. So if it was available by your insurance agent or your insurance company and they elected to offer it to you, you're hooped as far as the DFA is concerned. It's ignorance is no excuse. So whatever the calculus you had of how many people said that they were going to get DFA support and stuff like that, they, that actual number may be smaller than you thought it was. Unless something can shake that money loose, I know at least one business owner who's hooped and thinking of maybe not coming back.
Come to Wednesday's meeting.
Pardon me?
Come to Wednesday's meeting.
There is a public information meeting on Wednesday at 6 o'clock in the high school auditorium.
Is it 6 o'clock? Or is it 1:00 to 4:00?
Business owners is 1:00 to 4:00.
Yeah.
Business owners is 1:00 to 4:00, but there's also a public one at 6 o'clock in the high school.
Okay.
And you may get more information if you can't make the 1:00 to 4:00 because people are, they're in business, they're open.
That's right.
And, but their, their same individuals will be also at the evening session.
That's all right. I'll record a moment.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the gallery? Hearing that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Butler? All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.